Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education's third and final work session for the Recommended Fiscal Year 2027 Capital Budget and the Fiscal Year 2027 to 2032 Capital Improvement Program. I will begin today's meeting by having my colleagues introduce themselves for the record.
Good morning. Natalie Zimmerman, representing District Two.
Good morning. Carla Silvestre, School Board Member at Large.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Grace Rivera Oven, representing District One.
Good morning. Brenda Wolf, District Five.
Good morning. Rita Montoya, Board Member at Large.
Good morning. Laura Stewart, District Four.
Good morning. I'm Julie Yang, District Three. All right, today's work session is the third and final one for the Board to ask questions and provide feedback on the superintendent's recommended plan prior to board action on November 20th, our business meetings. The Board really appreciate the community's feedback through public comments, public hearings, and also additional emails and testimony that have been posted on the board docs, and we will take all these into consideration before we make our decisions. And I will turn it to Dr. Taylor to start the presentation, and I know that it's another long one, so I want to schedule breaks in between, and I will let you know ahead of time and my colleague ahead of time so that we know when we're stopping for breaks. I just looked through the packet that we'll take questions after the school security system. We'll take questions after the restroom renovation, and then we will do questions before the follow-up information, and then after the follow-up information. All right, with that, Dr. Taylor?
Madam President, I'm an optimist. It's a lot of information, but let's hope it's not a long one. With that being said, let's dispense with the formalities. I'm going to kick it to the experts. We've got a couple of new faces who will also be joining as subject matter experts on a couple of areas. As always, we have Andrea Swayatoka, our Deputy Chief for Facilities Management, our Chief of District Operations, Adnan Mamun, and D.J. Connolly, our Capital Budget Manager. They are going to be leading today's presentation, but we also have our Chief of Safety and Emergency Management, Marcus Jones, as well as a couple of folks in the audience. I see Dr. Jeff Sullivan and Jamie, who are also here to provide some additional support.
Thank you. You may go ahead.
Good morning. So we would start just going over the highlights of the recommended CIP, our request for major investment. It is a major request, obviously, more than we have done in the past. $2.77 billion is the total. We have a new prioritization framework based on condition utilization and adequacy, lifecycle planning, countywide initiatives, sustainability, making sure our modernizations are energy-efficient, and choosing that over replacement in many cases, and then non-capital action. We have recommended a countywide elementary boundary study to reduce split articulation and align with the new high school patterns. So just a quick reminder, in the first work session, we talked about the enrollment information and overview of the funding, and we talked about facility data and prioritization, the rationale and the explanation for that, as well as we talked about individual large school projects and other educational facility projects. In our second work session, we did talk, again, talked about enrollment review, and we went over the countywide elementary school boundary study, and then Sims and Saigo Creek Elementary School, Crown, CESC replacement, and we talked about P3 as a potential alternative financing method, and then CIP prioritization data. We dove into it last time, and then district-wide infrastructure projects. Today, we're going to be focusing on countywides in our CIP, which would include the security, HVAC and roofs, ADA compliance, PLAR, restroom renovations, BIMPE, which is building modifications and programs improvement, and outdoor play space and athletic infrastructure. And then after the presentation's over, we will go over the follow-up information requested during the work sessions. Just a quick reminder to saying that our work always aligns with the, you know, goal three of MCPS's strategic plan, and we want to make sure our capital investment ensure that more nice and accessible and sustainable facilities for everybody, and that provides equitable opportunities for every student and a safe, healthy workplace for every student and staff member. And then very quickly going over the timeline, we have already had work sessions, and then the superintendent had virtual listening sessions as well as multiple public hearings. And then we are here for the last work session today, and then we will be back in front of the Board for the Board's decision on November 20th. With that, I will pass it over to Mr. Connolly to take us through the countywide projects.
Sure, thank you. So, good morning. Today is all about countywide projects, so we will be presenting multiple different countywide projects, and we are happy to discuss any ones that we do not cover. So this is the overall expenditure schedule for our countywide projects. They are broken into various buckets of money, whether it's ADA, compliance, asbestos abatement, so on and so forth. We've already covered quite a few in previous presentations. We've covered the alt-ed programs, the CESC replacement, early childhood centers, holding school improvements, our elementary and secondary major capital projects, our materials management, building relocation, which is our warehouse, as well as our transportation and regional support facilities. So these projects, we always get questions, what is a countywide project? It's really these various buckets of monies that can be used for multiple schools throughout the county. So some schools are going to need some fire upgrades, some schools need to be painted, Miss Yang, we brought that up under the PLAR, which we'll go over. So these are just various buckets of money that we can address smaller but very important projects to our schools. Just like everything in our school system, safety is first, so we thought it was appropriate to start with our school security systems PDF. These projects cover a variety of different security features within our school, our infrastructure when it comes to safety. You can see our FY27 priorities, which are our crisis alert system, a security camera modernization, door sensors, and digital floor mapping, and I'll let the expert, Chief Jones, get into this a little bit deeper in a second. And you can also see our six-year plan here. So something we hear quite a bit from our MCCPTA leaders over the summer, they provide us comments from the clusters and administration, is we need enhanced security, whether it's additional cameras, ACS card readers, we've even heard it in this year's public testimony. So this bucket really takes care of ACS card readers, cameras. Thankfully, we have security vestibules at every one of our schools. That was a big priority for us in years past, so that is not included in this because we are now 100% completed. And if Chief Jones wants to elaborate a little bit more, and we will take questions after this bucket of money.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, and good morning to the Board and to Dr. Taylor. What Mr. Connolly stated is absolutely correct, as we are really trying to look at a multi-year modernization plan for our schools when we look at the world of security, and that comes in part with collaboration from the Department of Business Information Services, who is a great partner in helping us to come up with the infrastructure and dealing with a lot of the technology centered around the different resources that we're planning and that we already have, as well as our facilities management team as we look to shore up the security at our schools. One of the first things that I really want to highlight is that there is what I call a aging infrastructure in MCPS for a variety of great tools and resources that we have, but they are really aging rapidly, and they're really past their time. When I say that, I talk about camera security systems and servers that are actually, that record the actual activities that are important for safe and secure schools. So as we talk about this, not only is it our security systems that need updated, we're also in the need for ACS card readers, as noted, that we have had on our schools for quite some time, and there's new technology and integrations that we need to upgrade that in order to have more efficiency for our staff and our entry for our visitors, our visitors' management systems and the like. So these are the things that we are actually looking to focus upon, and also our alarm systems for our schools and facilities. I have noted that we've got some alarm systems that go back, that were actually installed in the mid-'90s, and these systems are now nearly 30 years old, if not older, and it does, again, when we look at alarm systems that have evolved in technology, the more efficient, and that we can upgrade those and be more compatible where we are in today's environment, particularly with talking with our camera systems and the like. Those are the things that we're looking at upgrading in that aspect. And then when we look at our new projects that, again, are a part of this plan, first and foremost, I'll mention digital mapping. This is something that I know the state has provided some guidelines for school districts. We have been in, we have been in meetings with, in contact with the state in regards to those guidelines and creating and preparing for digital floor mapping to work with our public safety partners for their responses, knowing exactly the layout of our schools and understanding that that's available to them as they are responding as an example. It also provides more detailed information on exact room numbers. It also provides detail as relates to exactly where are AEDs located in our schools, where are fire extinguishers located in our schools. These are the things that will help our public safety partners in their responses, as well as to help us from an emergency management standpoint to help address situations that we have. And I'll also speak about the door sensors. Our door sensors, again, are something that I think I've presented before the Board before, as we've talked about having the ability to have alarms on our doors, both secondary and primary schools for our LOPers as an example, that many of our schools, and I've talked to principals often, who have major issues with that, and these are things that would help us, also with unauthorized entry into our schools, that we've had some incidents where students have actually either opened doors and allowed other students who may not actually go to that school, who are there to actually, to disrupt our school day, and these types of systems are compatible with our alarms that would be able to notify school administration and school security immediately of the exact location of that door being open. And so this is a major project that we would have at all of our schools, and to include our special schools, to make sure that there is adequate coverage. Now, all of the doors would not necessarily be alarmed, not every door in every school. That is humongous, but we'd identify the main doors that the principals have identified. We've already done that. We've had our cluster security coordinators do an assessment and an audit, so that work has already been done, so we are, really have been in the planning stages of this project, but then again, this is something that I, again, reiterate that our principals are really asking for this as something that will help to help with them in their security-related responses to their school events. And the last thing that I'll note is what I think is very important, that I think that really for our system to be as large as it is and as many events that we have, again, to provide the actual real-time emergency notifications and better communications, which is a major challenge for us, is a crisis alert system that involves having a panic button type system that allows for immediate notification by staff and administration of events that are occurring, again, real-time, exact location. The technology does exist, as we have been speaking with several vendors in this regard, but this is something I think is vitally important, and we, again, we're really looking at this project as being at the top of, at the top of our ask for the coming fiscal year. But as you can see, that, again, with it being major, I think, again, in the largest cost, but this will be, I think, very fruitful in so many ways as I have described. So those are just some highlights of the requests that we have for these projects for the CIP.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I'm going to open up questions for my colleagues. I know that school safety is really very, very high priority for the Board. I am very pleased to see investment in this area, so I'm going to start with Ms. Silvestri. Please go ahead.
Chief Jones, the crisis alert system that you just described, would this be a button? Where, who has access to it? How widespread would it be?
So there are a couple of features that are available. We have not made any decision on which way we'll go yet, because there's a lot of testing and the like that we really need to look at research, but there's two ways to do it that's really formidable. One is a panic button option. It is actually a button, it's a card that you would actually have, example, just like your ID, and you'd have the ability to press it multiple times for the different types of emergencies that you might have, and that is something, again, it is geo-based, so wherever you're located at that particular time in your building, based upon the signals that are actually relayed, it would actually, when you press that button, it would automatically notify emergency management, all of the necessary people, to include the 911 system in the event of an emergency that, so, for example, that requires a public safety response. So that's one way of doing it. There's also the technology that does exist that involves our cell, it has cellphone app capabilities that allows you to do the same. I know, you know, there's a lot of discussion about cellphone coverage, right, about the availability of cellphones in many of our schools, which is real conversations. One thing I also say to folks, when I've talked to many of the vendors involved in the cellphone technology business, and we talk about cellphone coverage, one of the realities that sometimes we miss is the fact that schools were built, and many years ago, and then some, and again, my friends next to me probably have more to say about this, but they were built as bomb shelters, and when schools are built as bomb shelters, they're really kind of like don't give you that flexibility in the world of technology that we have today that allows you to be able to have great cellphone coverage for some of the services that we have.
If, just to clarify, and I know there's a lot of questions, so I'll be brief, what kind of crises are we talking about that would warrant pressing whatever?
Well, it could be, it could be a medical emergency. For example, you could have a medical emergency of a student who might, you know, might be injured or fall out in the middle of a hallway or a class that allows, again...
Medical emergency?
So a medical emergency, it could be an active shooter, right? It can be, again, any incident that requires, again, notification for security for immediate response from...
What are we using right now if we don't have this?
Well, you know, what we utilize, we really don't have that capability other than our security teams and administration communicating either through cellphones or notifying people on radios of notifying our 911 centers in order to get those responses there. This would have an automatic notification to that without having to create that avenue of communication.
If something happens in the classroom, what tools does the teacher have right now in order to alert the school that there's a...
Well, again, they would probably, probably at best would be probably like their cellphone, right?
Different schools have different mechanisms. Some have phones in the classroom, some have intercom in the classroom. It really just depends on the school site.
Yes, Ms. Rivera.
Remind me again, can I do two questions? One question, what was it?
I want us to go one question. I think Ms. Silvestri is the same question that's the follow-up.
No, no, that's fine. I just, yeah, because I have three, but is a follow-up a question?
Follow-up is good. You can do the follow-up. It's a conversation.
Okay, okay, just...
We will be brief so that, to the point, yeah.
Question for, just a follow-up.
Who was that?
Chief, is, do any jurisdictions comparable to us have this kind of technology currently?
Yes, there are jurisdictions that utilize these type. There's a system like, well, I would say like, the one that I've visited has been Stafford County. I know that, I believe Fairfax County has a system. Many of them are going to either what they call Raptor technology. That is, again, this is that crisis alert system that is giving real-time notification, camera notifications, all of that.
The, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the cell, the cell...
I am as well, yes.
Although we're talking about old schools, I'm talking about new schools.
Absolutely, right.
Like, I was at Harriet Tubman last night. There was no reception.
Right.
Anywhere in that school.
Right.
And so before we go investing a lot of money into things that might not actually be able to work, I would like us to look at various options.
So, so understanding that the, that the, when we talk about the panic button option, that is not based on cellphone technology.
Correct.
Okay, so that's why we are, and again, some companies are starting to really kind of expand their capabilities of having both, but the reality is, is that, you know, we want to make sure that whatever we do is consistent across the entire district.
Correct.
Right, that's exactly right.
And if we can look at our friends at HHS and other folks who use panic buttons currently and who they use.
Right.
I think that would also be a good idea. So my question, my number, the question that I have was, just like we did the HBAC evaluations and roof evaluations in our schools, I'm interested to know if we have done... and roof evaluations in our schools, I'm interested to know if we have done an evaluation on our alarm systems in our schools and the age of our alarm system. So I would also like to know, just like I asked with the bleachers, what is a lifetime of the bleachers? Where's a lifetime? What is the lifetime of an alarm system? And not just in the sense of working, but also technology wise, right? When does it become that, yes, they we have an alarm system, but it's not adequate anymore?
Right.
I don't know. Have we done anything like that?
I don't, well, I know we've we've done it. We are in the process, I should say this. My office, I gave direction for us to be able to start. We started with cameras. We've not yet arrived at the alarms, but we know that we've got, you know, that we do have a an array of alarm systems that have been in place for quite some time. Our entire notification system, I would deem it to be outdated, right? I mean, as technology goes, generally, when you talk to our experts, they generally say alarm systems, the life of an alarm is usually about 10 years. So again, that's what we want to have these conversations with our, you know, potential vendors as we talk about what is the lifetime of the these types of systems that we put into place.
And I guess Andrea, my my, you know where I'm going with this. I think it'd be great to have the same thing that we did with HVAC, like a ranking of that you would say, you know, this is definitely something that has to be at the top of the list and has to be looked at and definitely we need to replace this year. That would that would be great. And I'll hold for my other questions.
Sorry, like a ranking, like rank the schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's that's where I'm going, just like we did.
With facilities.
With facilities and just like we did with HVAC. I just think that's really, really important. These are things probably that we have not thought of. I mentioned, you said that some of them have been since the 90s. I would argue that some of them have been there since the 80s. And so I think it is really important for us to have a really good roadmap as we, you know, as we go forward. Thank you.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I'm really happy to see the idea of a crisis alert system. I know we still have to look into it more and kind of work out the details, but I'm really happy to see that. My question is kind of a general one. So when we look at a lot of these these spreadsheet charts in other areas, it might say Harriet Tubman Elementary, you know, this item, expected budget, this amount. But when we look at the school security systems line items, we don't see that same specificity. And I know when we talk about school security, there's a lot of reasons why we are a little more vague in our details and information we provide because it could actually be a security and safety threat. And so just, I want to make sure from my understanding and the community, why don't we see more specificity in terms of which schools might be getting these items? I think I have an idea, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, again, the first thing, the first thing I'll focus on is like, you know, one of the things, like I said, we state we've done is to really go and look at each school to see when exactly their systems have been put into place. And I'm primarily focusing on cameras, right? And the one thing I can say is there's been a staggered approach over the many years. And I'm I'm going back, I'll go back at least to like 2007, right? I could tell you, like, for example, we have recently replaced camera systems that were put in place in around the 2007 to the 2010 year timeframe in about 15 high schools. So we've replaced this year alone camera systems in 15 year 15 high schools. But we got a lot of work to do when we look at the overall theme. And this is why I I we could provide the board with, right, our schedule of what we think is, you know, when we look at a replacement schedule, moving that forward, because that's something that I think it's important for everyone to know when they should be anticipating new systems coming into place. Everybody has a cameras, not that we, you know, we don't have that. Every school has that. What we are looking at is to enhance and upgrade the cameras because of the the age of them.
Okay, so and whether it's here or not, because again, I don't want to necessarily highlight, like, oh, this school has a security issue and so.
No, no, no.
Right, we don't want people to know that.
No, it's not.
But I just just so that we're clear that there is kind of a maybe the ranking is the right is the right word. There is something that we're looking at to see who should be up next. And that's based on on these kinds of factors.
Yes, exactly.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
Thank you for this information and especially on modernization for our schools. My question is, are there any pilot programs? I should ask, what pilot programs do we have today or what are you planning? For instance, I know there's new technology and cameras and AI. So are we looking into that? Are we piloting? I mean, I know there was some snafus, a couple of places that also might have saved lives. So more.
Yeah, we are looking at some, we've got a pilot that we have on deck. I'm looking at utilizing AI with cameras. So so those are things we'll continuously research and report back out to the board that were things that we think could benefit the entire school district. And again, one of the things I've always, I'll you always hear from me, and I think it's for us to to make sure that we have a a fair and a just system, right, that covers everybody, that we're consistent in everything that we do from whatever for all of our schools. And so this is something that I'm really focusing on is like, if we can do it at this school, I want to make sure we can do it at that school. Because the way our schools are designed, and that can be challenges. So that that's very important.
Just a quick follow up on that. I actually talked to one of the vendors that they do this kind of work. And I was thinking after some of the issues we have around our schools, certain intersections, et cetera, if we could capture near misses so we know better to keep our kids actually arriving to school safely. It's just things I've been thinking about, how we could use that technology to make to make sure our kids are safe.
Part of our technology, I want to stress is something that I'm also, I think it's important for us to to think about is to expand it beyond MCPS. And we're working with, for example, the police department and the county's emergency management. The police department has really developed a system they call the Real Time Crime Information Center that they're tying into cameras such as that. So the intersection cameras that are near our schools, right? And that that could be something, again, as we all tie in sort of that information that helps everyone, right? It can help us from a safety perspective and to work out challenges that we have that we can see real time. So those are things that we're we are venturing into as we are talking about upgrading our technology, but bringing our public safety partners involved in that and seeing how we can all collaborate and make this more efficient.
I appreciate that collaboration. Thank you.
Chief, yes and no, just for clarification. Is the crisis alert system for all schools? Is the door sensor project for all schools? Is the security camera modernization that will sweep through like cover all our schools in different phases? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rivera.
Very quickly, you mentioned digital mapping. And it's my understanding that this was actually is part of a law to do the digital mapping. Am I correct?
So it's a it's a it's a it's not a law to mandatorily do it. It's a law to follow the the requirements that that the state has established, the guidelines that that if you institute a digital mapping system that you have to follow that. It's not that it's that you have to have a digital mapping system.
Okay, but would you would you agree that it is necessary?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we're way behind the curve.
We're on the same page then.
Yes, yes.
Because I do have to tell you, out of a lot of all these things, when you have an emergency, God forbid, an active shooter and the police respond, or when you have a fire out of control and the fire department responds, digital mapping can make the difference.
Yes.
Because it is updated to real time. So you're talking about making sure, because some schools, as we know, with a lot of crowd that are crowded, sometimes they turn a closet into a classroom, or they turn, you know, something else into something else. So whatever you intended originally to use that, it changes with time and with the with years. So to know exactly where everything is when there's an emergency, to me, is absolutely crucial about saving lives. So do you have an idea, a timeline, when we're going to be able to to achieve this? And I'll just give you very quickly, and Dr. Taylor knows, over the summer, I was going home and there was a fire at Watkinsville Elementary. And I see all these fire trucks turning into Watkinsville Elementary. My heart just stopped. So as I'm going in, they were trying to look for, because it's a very old school, and the fire department and the folks there, they had a very old map. And I'm telling you, it was like when they took it, it was falling apart, trying to figure out where the box was for all the electricals, and they had changed with the with the time. And that took, it took a while.
Right.
In an emergency. So so that's my concern, that it's not unique to Watkinsville Elementary.
Right.
But that other schools might be in the same position, so.
So the question is timeline.
Yep.
So I so I will tell you that we are ready to go. All we need is the funding.
And how long would it take to do this?
It would literally, I mean, we could probably have this in place probably within about three months of the funding being approved.
And have we, to this Stuart's point of piloting, have we done a piloting with digital mapping with anyone?
We, yes, and we, you know, we've worked with some of our emergency management just to kind of get an idea. We worked with one vendor that kind of gave us an idea of what this would look like. So but the reality is, I think we, the the technology has moved so forward, and I think we're ready to go. I think we are really ready to go.
More than half of the states in the United States actually require this. Maryland is a little bit behind the curve.
Right.
And so this is not new technology. It actually can be done relatively quickly.
Yeah, we've already given vendors our our information, and they're ready to upload it and ready to go.
Thank you. Ms. Silvestri.
Thank you. I don't see anything in the plan for weapons detection. What why are we in our exploration of technology to help us detect weapons?
So I would just say we're in the very early stages. I didn't think it would be really fair for us to put this information right now in the budget for us. I think we need to really assess the different weapon detection systems that are out there for us to really come back to the board and and Dr. Taylor to to provide some recommendations on what we see as what we think could be. I think by us doing some work already with our cameras, with some AI, that might give us some other options that could be inclusive. But I think we're, I would just say we're at the very, very early stages of that.
I'll just chime in on this very briefly. So in the short period of time in the last 450 days or so that I've just been in Montgomery County, the technology has evolved rapidly. And there are expensive options and there are less expensive options that do similar things. But this is also an idea that that needs some socialization. And we probably need to interact with this with a lot of community engagement before I think we're ready to to insert this as a future CIP cost. I think that there are a couple of corners that still need to be turned in terms of technology before we're even ready for that. The school systems that have this have a mixed reaction of both positive and negative outcomes. And so I think at this time, as pressing as that issue is, we have other safety measures that that seem to be a lot more pressing at the moment that really would elevate our safety more tangibly than some of the solutions we see in weapons detection right now. Doesn't mean we're not interested. We're very interested. We would love to see this take shape. We've talked to a number of vendors already. We would like to continue to explore that. But we think that the next critical step is really socialization before we bring it with a dollar sign attached to it.
Ms. Wolf.
Looking forward to that, Dr. Taylor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, following up on Ms. Silvestri's question, that I don't think that the technology is quite weapons detection, because look at the bag of chips. I think I want to trade in my car for an electric car. He said, not this year, wait till next year, and let's look at it. So I want to be sure that we investigate all kinds of weapons detection systems, because those kind of mistakes do nothing but lead to liability for us.
And just to give the community a little more context to Ms. Wolf's comment, there was another school district here in Maryland, actually, where a young high school student, a black high school student, who had a bag of chips, and that bag somehow was detected by the technology as being a gun. The police came up, I believe they had guns pointed. You can obviously understand how traumatic of an experience that would be for that child and any peers that were around, as well as the family and the school system. So I think it's important to me as well that we make sure that whatever we're using is accurate, is going to work, and does not just provide a false sense of safety to the detriment of our children in some of those instances.
So we will have a safety and security conversation coming up on the board. Work sessions today is we are focusing on the budget item. I thank you for your sharing the information. I want to move on to the next session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'm going to take us through the next couple of sections. I do want to remind the board and also the public that might be listening or listen to the recording, in chapter five of the book, we have short descriptions of all of our county wides. That's a great resource for people that want a better understanding of what's included. And then for the first time ever, you know, we're showing SNPs in this board work doc. But if you go to the MCPS CIP webpage, at the very top, you will find the expenditure plan, the real ask, and in there, all of these are linked into an exhibit document. It's a Google Sheet document. I know many of you, probably all of you have accessed that, and the public has been accessing that over the last couple of weeks. So while we've included snapshots in this presentation, that is available. It's not in the formal book, but it is on the webpage and available for the entire public to access. So that is a very different strategy. We've never shared this much before, and so excited to sort of share our spend plan for both FY '27 and the out years. So with that, I'm going to take us through HVAC. This is certainly a very important topic for many people. On the screen right now, we have FY '27 and our proposed spend plan for that. This is one of the county wides where we have listed every single school for the six year plan. You know, we do want to caveat, this may be subject to change as facility conditions change. We might need to move a project forward depending on the condition. But you will see a mixture of elementary schools in here that often range from anywhere from seven to $8 million. You will also see middle schools and then the high schools and sort of the nuanced difference with each of these. And we have a schedule that will show when we're asking for an elementary school, we are asking for the entire funding for the whole project. That is also true for a middle school. So you can see MLK on here as well. You know, it's a $14 million project. That is the entire project in lieu of asking for it across two different fiscal years. We think it is better so we can get the same contractor, one design team as well. An elementary school typically takes us one summer, if not two summers, just depending on the size of an elementary school. A middle school at a minimum will take at least two summers, if not three, depending on the size of the middle school. And a high school often takes us at least four. And so that is why you'll see in there, you know, Sherwood High School, we're asking for the first phase, so the first summer of construction. And then you'll see that repeated. So you'll see phase two of three in FY '28. I'm going to flip to the next. I know this is really small. Again, everyone's welcome to to look at it online and zoom in. Whoops. Stay here for a second. But you'll see the different phases for the high school. And I just wanted to point that out for you all and for the public, that the difference in the way that we are requesting funding. If we ask for a high school in one fiscal year, it'll take the majority of the budget. And since we cannot complete in one summer anyways, we thought it was important to actually spread that across the different fiscal years.
Okay.
So here is, just to give you all and the public a sense of of how we work in terms of a timeline for HVAC. So, you know, this summer, using this as an example, we reviewed the work orders, the data, we identified the priority of needs. Certainly, we have come to you all with our recommendation. In October and November, we will anticipate receiving county council approval this coming May 2026, and the funding will load on July 1st. From there, we hire the design team and the HVAC contractor. You know, we work through the design process, the permitting process, the state approval. Because these are state funds, we do have an extensive. Because these are state funds, we do have an extensive state approval process. They need to receive all of our documents in order for us to receive that 50% match at the state level. And then we need to finalize those permits and award the bid and procure the equipment. And often, these are long lead times. So with FY '27 funding, we would imagine those schools would start construction in summer of 2028. And then in that last bullet, we've listed, like I mentioned, typically, an elementary school is one to two summers, depends on the size of the elementary school. A middle school at a minimum is two summers, if not three. A smaller high school, we might be able to squeeze into three, but we are often seeing at least four, sometimes even five. We'd like to really keep it to four. Five is incredibly long. So on average, we're seeing about four summers for a high school. HVAC, we've also taken a similar approach, where we've listed out schools for all six years. The budgets do range wildly because of how many additions we have done over the years. This roof replacement often includes just a portion of the building based on the oldest section of the roof. So they, you know, there might be an addition that was built in 2001, and not funding, you know, that roof might still be in good standing condition. And so we are replacing the oldest section of the school. And so that is why you will see varying dollar amounts of each of the roof replacements here. And then we also have the six year, again, that lists out each of the different schools that we are proposing, and '28 through '32. Keep going to the next one. ADA, the Americans with Disability Act, is an incredibly important one. We shared this slide at the last work session, so just wanted to quickly highlight it and remind everyone that back in 2017, 2018, we did a complete assessment of all of our schools. We've provided the link here to our website. Those are all available for everyone to access. And in those reports, it gave us a breakdown of Priority One through Priority Five. We continue to work through those, really focusing on Priority One, making sure that the entrance is accessible, that parking is accessible, and then we're working our way through the different needs in the facility as well. And so we've provided a list for FY '27 for this one, and then a sense of, you know, the funding for the FY '28 through '32 as we move our way out. Pilar stands for the Planned Lifecycle Asset Replacement. We often say Pilar. This has quite a few different items in here. So we take into consideration, you know, asphalt repair, concrete repair on the exterior, interior things like casework and locks. This is actually, I'm going to jump to the next slide, because it was so long for FY '27, and we could not quite fit it all on the screen. So there's additional items in FY '27. We often get asked about the interior painting of a facility. So there's a number of schools proposed on there as well. So it's quite all encompassing. We also have doors and windows, other things like gym flooring replacement is used in this Pilar bucket. And we'll go through one more, and then we'll pause for questions. Restroom renovations is another big topic for us, and this is a mixture. So you will see things like single occupancy restrooms. So often, that encompasses a number of those scattered. Those could be staff or student restrooms. And then where it says restroom renovation, that would mean the multi-user one, so where you have multiple stalls and sinks for for boys and girls in there. So again, depends on which ones we, and sometimes it's all of them throughout the entire facility that we are focused on. And you can see the schools listed for FY '27. And then we have given you a sense of, in the out years for '28 through '32, that we will do a mixture of both the single occupancy and the multi-user occupancy. So we will pause before we move on to the next section for questions.
Sure. So we're covering a number of questions. I just want to say that how pleased I am with the details that's providing. If we look at the, take an example of the planned lifecycle, what school is being painted, what school's elevators work is being done? So I appreciate, what school's lighting is being done? I appreciate this level of of information for board member and for the public. I'm going to start with Ms. Stewart for questions.
Sure. So I know we've talked about how when we do, I think it's called a renewal, you have five systems or more, then you kind of package that together. Is that, like, reflected in any of these? Like, I'm just want to, how is that intersecting with these charts?
So the five multi-system approach you're talking about is a renovation and or and/or renewal, and though we don't, we don't have them in the CIP right now, so it wouldn't be. But for instance, if we were to do a renovation or a renewal, a renewal such as Sligo, it would, it's already wrapped up in the Sligo renewal. But for a renovation, we would like to get to a point where there are, especially with roofs and HVAC, because they have the same life expectancy, which is 20 years. So they should be sort of aging out at the same time. So wouldn't it make sense to do a roof in an HVAC project where you have cranes on site and maybe move those schools to a holding school? And it would be quicker and easier? We would, we could actually do it in one year instead of a multi-summer phased approach. A high school, we could probably do over a year or two versus four or five summers. And I think the last phase, last system that we did was Watkins Mill High School had five phases for HVAC. So it can take five years, just to be clear.
So this is a future strategy at this point?
Future, we still need to do the work, right?
Yes.
We still have plumbing issues, we still have electrical issues. So absolutely.
And then, should I wait for my next question?
That's fine. Thank you for checking, Ms. Stewart. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. And this actually relates to something you just said, because one thing that I noticed, and it sounds like maybe this is is the plan, in 2032, it looks like, though other high schools are getting things in one phase at a time, Churchill High School is scheduled to get Phases One and Two at the same time, it seems, at least based on what we're being asked to approve, while simultaneously, in that same year, it looks like they're on schedule to get a roof replacement. So is that kind of the idea here, that if we're going to have all the big machines out there, let's do it all in one go? Is that something that's going to be completed then in a summer? I recognize it's still, you know, six, seven years out.
Yes, but also, the thought with the renovation strategy is ideally, we would get to a point where we could actually move out the entire school. Not possible right now with Churchill, but in a year, and do some of these so that we're not, I mean, it's incredibly hard to do many of these in a short eight week. We can do it over the course of a year. It's only a year that they might be in a holding, and let's knock out five, at least five of those, and then we can get state funding. Because right now, we are only eligible for state funding for roofs and for HVAC. It is not eligible for restrooms and other things. So that, if you package it together, then we can maximize more of the state funding.
Okay, but then it sounds like, whether it's this year or in a few years, we're going to be talking about where the Churchill students going to go during that time? I guess, right, these are the questions the community starts to ask when they start to see these things. And again, recognizing this is way out in time. None of us might even be here at that time. Who knows, right? But, right, if we're looking at that, then I think those are kind of some of the questions that people start to have. And I have other questions, but I'll, I'll wait.
Yeah, Ms. Wolf.
Can I make a clarification? Just to piggyback off what Ms. Swaitoka was talking about with the the multi-systems, as everyone knows, our enrollment is declining, and a lot of our state aid for our replacement and renewal and some of these other projects are enrollment-driven. They're capacity projects. So we are envisioning, and we are trending towards a lack of state aid for these capacity projects. So these replacement, these tear down and rebuilds are most likely not going to be state-eligible.
Okay.
The only way we could make them eligible is if we do these multi-systemic approach, where eligible enrollment eligibility is out of the window. So if we go with that approach, we're actually eligible for more state aid, too.
No, absolutely. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we explain that whole thing, so that people don't just look at one part that feels alarming to them. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. My question is on roof replacements. Are these anticipated to be done over the summer while the building is empty, for all of them?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I just have another short one. You know, people want to know why we don't do more HVAC work. But I'm looking at this, and it looks like to do HVAC for one high school is $32 million. That should tell you why we can't do, but so many of them at once. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Rivera-Offens.
Thank you. This, this is a great list. I think this is very transparent. You know, we talk about transparency a lot, but sometimes we don't see it. This is really great. When I'm looking at your six-year total plan for HVAC, I just want to, one of the things you said about the the funding that we're not going to have state funding for a lot of these projects, the first two projects on their, Dr. Charles Drew and Masunaga, they did get state funding.
Correct.
However, what happened? Because are we, wasn't that enough? And now we have to put in the difference, correct?
Yeah, it wasn't a state aid issue. It was, we developed a scope of work, and we got bids back, and they were much higher, just a lot of, like, a lot of school construction. And so we are eligible to reapply for more.
Okay.
So that cost increase of, so for Matsonaga was 2.15 in our state aid request, and 1.2 million. That's reflected of the the overage that we saw. So Drew came back 2.4 million, and Matsonaga came back 4.3 million more than we were expecting.
Okay.
So that is why you see that. And this is, we've done this in the past. It's not just this year.
Okay. Sorry, did you say then we might be able to apply for more state aid based on the amounts that came back in the bids?
Yeah.
So this could change a little bit, too, obviously, to offset if we end up getting that covered?
And we did. It's on page 13 in our state table, where we ask for additional state funding to match this cost increase.
Oh, that's in the book.
In the book.
Yes. Okay, let's be clear.
Page 13 of the book. Yes, where there's a whole breakdown of which projects we asked, and you'll see all the FY '27 HVAC projects in addition to these two, where we're asking for more funding.
And and I guess, thinking about these projects long term, as we have less enrollment, I think we need to kind of revisit this to see what this really is going to look like on our dime. And maybe some of the rules of the state need to change a little bit to accommodate to the needs of local school systems like ours. The only thing that I also had asked before was, because people are going to be like, why is Masunaga getting, you know, why, right? Because people are like, why? And at least I know there was a lot of school interruption during the last couple of years, where there was no learning going on, because we had to close, that's one of the schools in my district, we had to close or not have school at all, because there was no HVAC during very hot days or during very cold days. So one of the things that I had asked, and and I know you have a lot on your plate, but maybe this is for later, for transparency-wise, is that HVAC roofing and so on, bursting pipes do have an effect in the learning environment and for education to go on. And it does take away time from the classroom. And I think something, that's something we have not in the past got information on. But I think that might be also something that is good for, when we get, we would go for state funding and so on, that those things are taken into account. Because I don't think they are currently.
Yeah, we do, I want to highlight in our countywide, in our CIP, that we do have a separate PDF for emergency replacement of major building components. So this is what you're exactly talking about. Whereas Matsonaga, we had planned on replacing anyway, but if something comes up and we need a temporary chiller or temporary boiler, we do have, and we increased it significantly this year, was 1.5, I believe, in previous years. Now we're asking for 3.75. So we accounted for that, because we know we're we're back, backlog.
And Ms. Swaitoka, page 13 that you were referencing. I just want to, she referenced a page.
We'll come back to you.
The community can't follow all that.
Ms. Silvestri.
I just wanted to reiterate Ms. Rivera-Offens' point about just the changing nature of our schools and the funding that's coming from the state. So if it's dependent on increased enrollment, and enrollment's not going up in most school systems in the DMV, so they need to kind of relook at the formula so that we are getting state funding that meets the needs of the school system. I mean, that you don't fund a renovation of a bathroom. Okay, that needs to be relooked at, because the bathroom is a critical component of every school. So just, I think that, Ms. Yang, this needs to be part of our discussions with our legislatures. I think we've talked about this already in terms of relooking at how school construction dollars are allocated to meet the needs of our current school system.
Thank you for that point. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. My question is about HVAC, and it's about the phasing. So I'm looking at, for example, I see Montgomery Blair listed in FY '29 for that phase, seven and a half million. The following year, in 2030, I see Phase Two at 8 million. Then in 2031, Phase Three is 8 million. And then in 2020, I'm sorry, in 2032, nine and a half million for Phase Four. Can you explain, like, why, like, is it that each phase costs more? Are we, like, why does the cost increase for each phase? Is that unique to Blair? It doesn't seem unique to Blair. I see it for other schools, but just explain it a little bit further.
Yeah, we are taking into account cost escalation.
Got it.
That takes place each year in construction.
Okay.
So inflation, yeah.
I I had a feeling that was why, but then that leads to another, like, follow-up to that. So each phase, in theory, should cost the same if we were to do it in one bundle?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. My comment is less related to what project that is being scheduled, but more to Dr. Taylor and to our whole school system. If I just take a look at the HVAC for for our school system, each year for 2027 is projected $55 million. We are a huge system. How do we, through procurement process, because we have scale, that we can get as best a deal as possible for the school system? Do we have strategies? Because we want these dollars to go far.
So scale is not really the the issue. And and economies of scale definitely help here, and economies of scope also help here. The the issue that we confront is twofold. Vendors that have the accessibility to do work exclusively in the summer, which is a limitation, because we we cannot do this work successfully when the buildings are in full utilization. And secondarily, you know, candidly, we need the dollars. And so it maybe isn't so much about procuring in bulk, because candidly, we are already doing that. But it's our our reach and expansion to additional vendors who have the capacity to works exclusively in the summertime.
Okay. It's good for us to think about these things, because we want project to be done, but done at a rate that that is is beneficial to us. Okay. Ms. Stewart.
My question is on the difference between replacements and ventilation projects. We have two ventilation projects, New Hampshire Estates and Goshen Elementary. And and how are we prioritizing this list? I mean, yes, we would love, and I would like to prioritize HVAC projects in our CIP for this year, but for some reason, we can't do the 55.6 million. How are we prioritizing, and how does the difference between replacement and ventilation might even work into that prioritization? And what's the difference?
Well, ultimately, it's going to come back to the board on how you want to prioritize what projects move forward. I'll defer to the team in terms of making some recommendations and some suggestions, but my best advice, clearly HVAC has elevated to the point where where we really do need to have a concrete plan over the next two decades on how we're going to get the train back on the tracks. But to look at the CIP as a whole and look at other projects that are also going on in the CIP, and what creates funding capacity so that you can, you can cover more of this and maybe less of something else, but.
And I I agree with that strategy. I just want to make that clear. But I also want to have context here between the different projects.
Let me just briefly explain the difference. So you are correct that we have, New Hampshire Estates and Goshen are not a full HVAC replacement, meaning all of the heating and cooling elements are not being proposed to be replaced. What's being added? What's being added is what we often refer to as a DOAS unit, a dedicated outdoor air system that provides that ventilation. And in those particular schools, and like many, right, we have continued to experience mold issues. And with the lack of ventilation in there, it creates a condition where moisture is more common. And so these projects are aiming to resolve some of those issues. If it's a replacement, like the Strawberry Knoll and Flower Valley, it would provide both new heating and cooling along with the ventilation component.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. Thank you for all of this information. I think it really helps the community to better understand. I really appreciate the timeline that you had. Question I get all the time about everything is, why does it take so long, right? So I just, I appreciate that. I wanted to take us back to the question that Ms. Rivera-Offens had about Drew and Matsunaga. And you were explaining how basically the bids came back way above what we would have anticipated and that you did go back then and ask for more state funding. So I just want to make sure that, so that the community can completely understand. You mentioned page 13 of the book. So for the community's benefit, this is the book we're talking about, right? The CIP Proposed Budget. And page 13, you're talking about Chapter 1, page 13, right? Because the numbers are a little different than we might typically notice. And specifically in this chart, we're looking at the fiscal year 27 state funding request. So for Matsunaga and Drew, we can see that we got some funding previously. This is the cost of the bids, the 9 million and the 8 million. We did request more funding, but the amount of funding we got additionally really pales in comparison to what that overall cost is. So these numbers that are in here, the 2.4 million, the 4.3 million for Drew and Matsunaga, that's what's still left over that needs to be covered, right? Okay, so even with the additional state funding request, we still have this amount that we need to fund to be able to get these in, right? Thank you so much.
And that's at 50%, correct?
Correct.
So it's 50% is what.
Ms. Wolf.
My question is more of a comment. It's on ADA compliance. You know, we've started these projects before and we have not brought them up to code. I don't think we should be doing projects unless we're absolutely able to bring them up to code. And I think we need to admit which schools we just can't do that at. It's just not possible, which we know Wooton is a problem and that it needs to be rebuilt to be accessible.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make that comment. So on these schools that you've listed here, they can all be brought up to code, right?
I will circle back with you.
Cab and John.
Many of these are just touching the first one to three priorities. So again, really trying to prioritize what was done through the assessment. We can take that strategy, but Priority 1 is really making sure you have an accessible. If you can't get into the school, the rest is sort of a mute point. And that was the recommendation that came out of these reports.
Yeah, I looked at that. I saw that you were mostly doing entrances. And that's great, but if you're doing anything inside a building, it needs to be brought up to code.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. And Ms. Rivera-Offens?
Just to follow up on ADA, I noticed my sentiments are the same. If we cannot bring them up to code, it's really mute to do anything. And just like we're transparent with certain things, I think it is important to be transparent with ADA compliance. I did not see Damascus Elementary here, so I'm a little nervous.
So that's actually in the follow-up, so we'll get to that because that's not funded. It's using FY26 funding.
Okay, okay, because I know that's definitely a Priority 1. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I also have an ADA question. In looking through, I have to admit, I don't see the slide number, this slide that's up here right now. In clicking on the link provided there where we have the, like, the compliance data and scrolling through, when I look at two of the schools listed here, they have the two gray dots, which is saying not applicable due to recent or completed capital projects. Can you explain further why they're on the list?
Can you share which ones you're looking at for the public?
Yes, let's see. I saw, now I lost it. Sorry.
I could guess which ones you might be looking at, like a Stone Gate might be example, that they have received their full major capital or replacement after these reports were complete, or it was happening at the time that this was, right? So that, you know, this is seven years at this point. And so likely, it was either something that was in construction at the time that this assessment was taking place.
Got it.
It was about to start construction, or that construction has happened after this.
So it's more of a statement about the data being old?
Old, correct.
Than about why we're moving forward with these projects?
Correct.
Got it. Then do we have an opportunity to refresh this data?
We can. It was something that, you know, we discussed and that I brought up. I, you know, there's so many different things that we do need to assess. I do think we have not gotten through everything by any stretch, so it all is still very applicable. So I think we just have to be mindful of using consultant time for something that we still haven't gone through the full list. So I think we'd like to discuss that internally as a team and happy to circle back.
Yeah, if it would be possible to find out what cost for that would be, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
My question to the team is about relocatable classrooms. As we are seeing a lot of removal as the school enrollment plateau and decline, on the spreadsheet, I see removal cost, okay, there's a cost. Then I see allocation to say, hey, we need new placement. So what happens when we remove something? And do we reuse it or, just walk me through a little bit? Because I see removal, but I also see replacement, you know?
So anytime we remove a relocatable, if it's within, we're still in an active lease, we can relocate it to another school that needs it. There obviously are costs associated with that, but the lease would continue with that relocatable. There are new fire codes that are, if we are to install a new relocatable, it's much more expensive to the tune of like another 50% of what we currently do. So while there will be pockets of enrollment growth, we do want to account for that. And then we also want to account for relocating the relocatables to different schools.
I think you will see too in the relocatable classroom, it's not one we're presenting here, but it's a countywide. If we go to the very beginning, it's towards the bottom of the overall list. We are showing a decline. So we start at 4.5 million of the requests in FY27 and sort of work our way down. That is our hope and goal as we see the decline, that we can start to remove more and more relocatables.
And don't need to renew those needs.
Correct.
Okay, so, so that's a good, that helps us with our understanding. Ms. Stewart.
I'll pass for now.
Sure. Ms. Montoya.
I have two more questions, but they're in two different categories. So let's go ahead and start with roofs or roofs. I'm not sure how that, maybe someone, one of the teachers can correct my grammar. Wooton and McGruder are still on the roof list. And so this is where things just get a little tricky to understand, both as a board member, I think for the community. We have various proposals on the table. We see that the CIP captures some parts of some of those proposals, even though we all understand we still have to work through the process. But then for other proposals, it doesn't seem to be capturing and then we still have, and these are millions of dollars, right? These are not small, you know, we're not just adding some weather coating or something like that on there. So just help me to understand and help the community to understand, please.
So because in the original superintendent's recommendation, McGruder and Wooton were not in the six years, those roofs have really passed their point of expected useful life. And so knowing that they weren't coming up for the next six years, again, when the original superintendent recommendation came out, we also did not feel like we could wait another six years to replace those roofs. Now, in lieu of the additional options, right, that are out there, and some are whole replacement, some are renewal, the one advantage to a roof is you often, if we do a renewal where we're gutting the inside of McGruder and Wooton, a roof you can reuse. Like, that is probably one of the best investments we could make for a renewal project where we could keep that existing roof. We might need to redo patches here and there, especially if we add an addition or if we, you know, add any additional HVAC equipment or change that. But it is a fairly solid investment, even if we keep it, and then do a renewal down the road.
Okay, I remembered my question.
I might have some follow-ups, but I need to think about that for a moment, so.
Okay, Ms. Stewart.
There's a lot here, so we're trying to get through everything. I notice in Pelear, there's masonry and concrete work at certain areas. I just want to make sure, do we go back to work that was done somewhat recently? What is under warranty? Do we follow through on that? Because it does seem to me that, for instance, I think at Damascus Elementary, that concrete wasn't that old. It was already coming apart. Can you let me know how we follow back with contractors to make sure that, you know, they installed it correctly?
Yes, we are trying our best to constantly be checking in on warranty, particularly roofs probably is the primary example and HVAC. Those have extended warranties. And we are constantly, if we have an issue, we were just huddling as a team the other week to really make sure, right? This is an overlap between our maintenance team and our construction team. And, you know, at the school level, they need one method. They need to submit a work order and they don't need to worry about who is doing what behind the scenes. And so we were just talking through that process of making sure it gets to the right people on our facility side of, okay, how old is this roof? The school is saying it's leaking. Is that a warranty issue or is it the maintenance division? So yes, we do try in our asset essentials to track everything. How long does that warranty last so that we are sending out, whether it's the contractor or whether it's our maintenance team?
I would love to hear more about that, maybe in fiscal management. Thanks.
Last question, Ms. Montoya, then we'll move to the next session.
Well, I have a follow-up to that and then I had another question about another section. So if we're going to move on to a whole nother section, I think that we need to ask both of those questions.
Oh, so if it's brief, oh, we can always follow up with email. Go ahead.
Right, but if we follow up with email, that information does not go to the community. That's the purpose of these sessions is so that the community has the information. So as a follow-up to my roof question, I appreciate the explanation. I just needed a minute to digest that. So is it cheaper, though, to have the roof done as part of a rebuild, kind of a package, if you will, versus we're going to have the roof done and then maybe later we're going to build the rest of the school? And maybe it's not, because maybe all those pieces get added up and it's the same amount. I don't know.
Yes, it can be. If we're going to put it all under one large, you know, construction manager, yes, there can be economies of scale and savings there.
And does that affect, because you talked before about, like, with Winston Churchill doing the HVAC and the roof together, that helps us to qualify potentially for more state aid. And so here, if you're just doing a roof, whether it's McGruder, Wooton, or any other school, does that mean we wouldn't qualify, like, for the state aid because we're not packaging it with another system?
So the way the state aid works, especially for any systemic work, including the renovation we're talking about, where we're targeting five building systems, the state's calculation goes back 16 years. So if they do participate in the roof, they, so let's say we replace the roof of McGruder in 2031. So basically, when we go back to ask for more money for a renovation, they will take that roof part out of that calculation.
Okay, so they're looking at a 16-year window from when you request, what, if you've requested any other systems?
For that particular system, correct.
Right, it goes into that five-system package, basically, right?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That makes a lot more sense. My other question had to do with restrooms. I noticed that, again, for a lot of these, we have like a very detailed, right? This school needs this and this much. But I noticed then for restrooms, we don't really have that after the fiscal year 27. Is it because these are just all the orders for restrooms that we have? Or we haven't figured out exactly what the ranking order should be in terms of who needs what?
We do have a fairly detailed list. I think part of it is just, restrooms is an interesting one. It can also be funded in ADA. So it's also trying to land on where we land with how much funding we're going to get through ADA because things are solved through that. So I think for us, it's trying to be as transparent as possible without not overcommitting and putting too many pieces out there.
Okay, so we recognize that other schools may also need restroom upgrades, renovations, et cetera.
Absolutely.
And just because it is not listed here, it's not that we don't know or we don't care or anything like that, right?
So the plan would be to come back and for FY28, right, when we do an amendment year and really spell out, hopefully, certainly what we're doing in FY28, but also trying to maybe even include FY29 in there.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I understand. I have one last, last, last question.
Just a follow-up to that. When you did the ranking, or maybe, I don't know if you did the ranking with the bathrooms, but when you're talking about, are we talking about special education bathrooms, for example, that might need renovation? Or we might need to add a special education bathroom because there's now a new program at a school that wasn't there before?
Absolutely. So we, that would typically come out of either BIMBIE or the restroom renovation, which we're going to talk about, the building modifications and program improvements. So if an elementary school gets an autism program.
Yes.
It's, it might be a bathroom, but it also might be a bathroom, a prep space, an observation room, all encompassing is under that BIMBIE window.
Yeah, because there's quite a few of those in my district that, you know, they just got new programs, but the bathrooms are not quite up to code to be an ADA or an observation room or so on. Okay, that's good to know. And I also learned something new. Thank you, Mr. Anand. I didn't know there was a 16-year retroactive in that formula, so that is also good to know. I love when I learn new things. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Let's move on.
All right, so we just talked about this a little bit, the building modifications and program improvements. This bucket of money really does cover a lot of different things, whether it's science lab renovations, special ed modifications. We really envision this pot of money being, you know, able to accommodate these regionalized programs in the future. So while we do have a six-year plan, these, it's important to note that these are all subject to change, right? Because if a school receives a new program, we are going to pivot. If there's a school like Twinbrook and Damascus Elementary's that they were in the CIP for a major capital project and we know they have ADA issues, we are now going to pivot and reutilize some existing ADA monies for those schools, which we are going to get into. So that is why you see subject to change because these do change year to year. So the restroom one, Ms. Montoya, they will change. And I want to make a point that we talk to our Department of Maintenance every single year, all the time, especially over the summer, how many work orders are being placed? Because they might not be able to take care of it. Where they thought, we have three more years left in this restroom, this group restroom, and then it just starts failing over that year and we need to adjust. So we are constantly pivoting. So these are just projections and estimations. But yes, this, the BIMBIE fund really does cover a lot of very essential parts of our programmatic piece of the building. All right, and we will go over our outdoor play space and athletics infrastructure PDF, which this is a new one. This sort of builds off, we have had in the past an outdoor play space bucket of money that helped with playground replacements, but quite frankly, it wasn't enough. It was 450,000 per year. And you can see with our new budget, we have significantly increased this. I know we're going to talk a lot about turf, but this does encompass, Ms. Rivera-Offens, you know, you were talking about bleachers. And guess what? They, just like every other asset in our school building, have a life cycle. So it's, whether it's in the stadium, whether it's in our gymnasiums, anything. And it's not just athletics, but it's also playgrounds. And you'll see in both this FY27 chart as well as our six-year plan, we have placeholders. We do have a plan of where these, these different playgrounds could go. But again, they will adjust year by year depending on playground inspections and things of the like. So for FY27, you can see we've slated for three to four elementary schools to receive playground assessments and replacements. New turf installations at McGruder, Poolsville, Springbrook, and Watkins Mill High Schools. And turf field replacements at Richard Montgomery and Walt Women High Schools. We'll get into this a little bit later, but typically a turf lifespan is between eight to 12 years, so we target about 10 years for this. This is our six-year plan. You can see it sort of mimics what our FY27 plan is. I would say at some point, we would like to expand and even go with more line items with bleacher replacements, LED lights at our stadiums, because our stadiums are not just used for athletics. They're used by the community. They're used for pep rallies and other school events, so same with the gyms. So this is just an all-encompassing, both from an elementary school playground standpoint to our secondary schools with their gymnasiums and their outdoor facilities. We presented this last work session, but these are the current schools that have synthetic turf. We currently have 12 high schools, one middle school, and one elementary school. Right now, we're tracking in today's dollars to be a full replacement, which means you're digging up the ground and you're putting the subgrade and then topping it off with the turf to be about 2.5 million dollars. And for those schools like Whitman and Richard Montgomery. And for those schools like Whitman and Richard Montgomery that just need the top part replaced is about $1 million. So these are the schools, and we were asked to have the most recent year, and this is actually on our athletics site as well, if anybody wants more information. Dr. Sullivan and his group have a very detailed, they show us maintenance assessments and things of that nature. So this gives the public sort of a view of where they're at. And leading to the next slide, this is a map of where the turf currently exists, where we plan on placing them in FY '27, and then the five years to wrap up our six-year CIP. So I'm going to orient everybody to the legend with those different colors of triangles. So the schools in green are, right now, they have existing turf. The blue triangles are projects that are in our CIP currently, meaning major capital projects, whether they're Crown, Northwood, Woodward, or Damascus. So these are schools that a part of their major capital project would receive turf. The black triangles would be that chart that we just showed to have recommended new turf. And then the red ones would be the ones we would get to the next five years. So the plan is to have turf at all 27 high schools by the end of the CIP cycle, but this gives you a snapshot of where it currently exists, where we plan on going in 2027 and So there are various costs. We've been asked this quite a bit. We have gotten quotes just as of last week. We wanted to get as up-to-date cost as possible. So this shows you the upfront capital costs as well as the yearly maintenance and operating costs. You can see that natural grass is much more cost-effective in terms of the initial site work, but it's more expensive to maintain yearly. You can see it's $634,000 for a natural grass field, but the maintenance is much more expensive. And there's reasons for that that are in the bullet points above. So with grass, you have to line it, mow it, treat it, aerate it, top dress it, overseed it, and water it. These costs do not reflect gas or maintenance for the mowers that you would need for the grass. The turf fields, and I'll let Dr. Sullivan get into the nitty-gritty of these, but the turf fields already come lined, you don't need to water them. We do have $12,000 worth of overall maintenance. So that is all reflected in this cost chart. And I think we're good. All right, so usage. This was an eye-opener, putting this, these numbers together. So currently, right now, it is sort of an apples-to-apples comparison. We do have 12 high schools with natural grass stadiums, 12 high schools with synthetic turf. That is because Northwood is offline and is over at Woodward, so it actually broke down pretty evenly. So the average use, average hours used per year for all high schools, so for the natural grass, this does reflect all 12 high schools that have this, the natural grass stadium. And then for the synthetic turf line, it does incorporate all 12 high schools that have synthetic turf. So we currently do not use our stadium fields for PE, our physical education classes. Athletics uses them over 6,600 hours a year. And then for the community use, we went on the 2025 CUFF report, and we found that natural grass stadiums were used 261 hours. So for all 12 of those high schools that have natural grass, that came up to just under 7,000 hours for 2025. Synthetic turf, PE, we used 4.7 hours of use per day. That is to allow for changing and to get out to the stadium field. So that's a little over 10,000 hours. Athletics uses them roughly over 15,000 hours, and community use, over 20,000 hours. So that's, that was a pretty glaring comparison for just under 7,000 hours to just under 46,000 hours. And in this table, this shows you a breakdown of both the costs and the usage available. So you can see the upfront costs for turf is almost $1 million more, but the amount, and these numbers for the estimated usage is over 10 years. And again, we did the 10-year maintenance and 10-year usage based on the effective useful life that we anticipate for a turf field. And then the last column, it's a breakdown of what it costs, both your upfront capital and your 10-year maintenance, estimated 10-year maintenance cost over 10 years for both natural grass and synthetic turf.
Thank you for this presentation. Thank you for Dr. Sullivan for joining us. I'm going to open up for questions. Mrs. Zimmerman, please go ahead.
Thank you. And maybe I missed it, but could you explain further why physical education is not using natural grass?
So the physical education classes are not on national, natural grass to allow the fields to rest. So they're typically using the practice fields or other facilities around the campus, but not on the stadium field. So typically, our natural grass fields are only used for games. So our grass field schools are not practicing unless there is an extenuating circumstance that requires them to practice on the fields.
I see. Okay, Ms. Sivestri.
I have several questions, but I'll start with safety. Over my seven years here on the board, we've had different student athletes come to testify about different fields and how they've caused injuries during play. Could you, I didn't see any data about that comparison. Could you talk about why, why you feel that the turf fields that you plan to put into all the schools are going to be safe for our student athletes?
So the artificial turf technology continues to evolve and get better and better. And what we see in our play amongst the grass and artificial turf fields is that they're both safe for our student athletes. And we do feel confident in our artificial turf fields in providing safe spaces for our student athletes. I do want to reference the OLO report that provided some data and information as well regarding injuries and safety. There's some references in there. Most notably, I believe it was 73% of the studies showed there were no differences between artificial and natural grass fields with the newer technology. It has evolved, the shock pads, and you see that with the GMAX and the hardness. And all of our maintenance reports are on our website, real time, so that the community can see that we are maintaining these fields monthly, as well as conducting prior to the fall and spring seasons, GMAX testing on the fields, and those results and those reports are posted for our community.
If I could just clarify, Dr. Sullivan's working from memory, but I am actually looking at the OLO report, and I just want to clarify that it does, the reports you're citing say that over 53% of the reports reported no difference in overall injury rate. The report also does note that the type of playing field is not solely responsible for the type of injuries, and so there's a lot of variability in that data as well.
What's the date of the OLO report?
2004. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 24. I said, I apologize.
2024.
July 30th, 2024. I apologize.
That's a lot better.
I know, yeah. Nope, 2024.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Rivera, Ovens.
So I'm just trying to understand, if there is no difference and their official turf fields cost more, why is this a good thing?
So I want to reference our core values for MCPS Athletics of equity and access, and actually, the slide that is up in terms of the hours, if we can get that pulled up. The artificial turf fields provide an exorbitant number of hours of use, not only for athletics, but also for our physical education classes throughout the school day, as well as our communities. And not only are they providing the hours, they're providing a top-notch playing surface that is lined and ready to go and is resistant to any of the weather outside of thunder and lightning. We're playing. The games go on, not just during the weather, but also the days that follow significant rain events. And the fields are safe, they're playable, and what's happening right now is our artificial turf fields are becoming homes for our grass field schools to play on when there are significant weather events. They're calling their neighbors and moving games to play on turf so that we can continue to get the games in. Additionally, the artificial turf fields, you know, I've been talking about the games there, but the artificial turf fields open up a practice space. And so the schools with artificial turf are able to practice on those fields in the afternoon hours prior to the games in the evening. And so that keeps students on campus. And so I want to reference some of our newer schools that are under construction, Crown and Woodward. Crown in particular, there are no middle school, elementary schools, park fields remotely close to that campus. So we're going to have to be shuttling students off-campus for practices. We're doing that at a number of our campuses right now, especially with the addition of girls' flag, which has been a wonderful thing. And we have the student interest and participation numbers to support adding junior varsity girls' flag in the fall season. That will mean there are 10 teams sharing the stadium field just for games. And we've got to find a practice home for all of those teams. So the artificial turf fields open up that access point and provide equity across the schools in providing a top-notch playing surface for our games. And I think, when I say top-notch, I think we speak to, we look at our state championship, our state semifinal events, and where those games are being conducted, all on artificial turf. We have actually hosted the state championships for field hockey and lacrosse at Paint Branch High School here in Montgomery County when college campuses were not available. They called us and said, hey, Jeff, can we come down and host these? And we did. So that speaks to that consistent level of playing surface that artificial turf provides, and the confidence that the games will go on. I also want to speak to the community use aspect. So while we are not allowed to, or we can't really open up, we're allowed to, we really don't have the ability to open the grass fields to the community as much as we'd like because our programming is using them extensively. When we have artificial turf field, we remove that and open the doors to our campuses, bringing our community in to use the fields. This not only occurs during our seasons, the fall and the spring, but also during the winter and the summer, where even our teams are not using them. I'll give you a quick example on the winter. In a couple weeks, our grass fields will be covered by turf blankets. They will be completely taken offline and covered by blankets to assist the grass with growth. No one is using the fields for three months. The artificial turf fields, though, they're being used all the time by PE classes when the weather allows, and our community groups are all over the artificial turf from mid-November until March 1st, when our spring season starts. A similar thing happens in the summer when we've got to take the fields offline to allow the growth of the Bermuda grass.
I appreciate that. As someone who grew up in this community and who went to a high school that won back-to-back championships, we didn't have turf fields, and we still hosted many of those things. So again, I guess the community has, still has some concerns. I know you're saying equity, but when this program was started, it was really not started with an equity lens, so I'm going to push back a little bit on that. But again, I just, my, you know, as, as we have seen science advance with turf fields, we have also seen science advance with grass. So I really want us to do a very comparable comparison. I, I think, my belief is natural is better. That's just my personal belief. As I said, I grew up in fields and we, you know, we turned out okay. But you also hear about, and I appreciate Ms. Sivestri's question about injuries, that also we have heard of injuries of when the turf field is too old. It overheats in the summer, and we have kids who have gotten burned and other things. So I just want to make sure that we are doing the evaluation, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, this is, this is a new thing. But as somebody who grew up in the 80s, I grew up on good old grass, and I know as somebody who was the head of CUFF for many years, I know we had a lot of advancements with Bermuda grass and other, and other things where we can also, but one of the things you have not touched on, Jeff, is also the fact that our weather has a tremendous impact on that. So I just would really like us to, to be very cumbersome before we invest even more to ensure that the options, you know, is still more expensive than what it is, and we are facing some financial times ahead of us. So I appreciate the equity lens as well, but like I said, I push a little back on the fact that when we started, you know, turf deals, we really did not look with an equity lens back then, so, but thank you for that.
Can I just chime in real quickly on the pilot conversation? We have been collaborating closely with Parks, right? They're in a very similar situation to us, constantly evaluating the differences between natural grass and turf. And so we've, are in communication with them. They did pilot a very extensive natural grass field, Hillendale Park on New Hampshire Avenue, just south of White Oak Middle School for us. They have already replaced it within the first two years, and they have some really great photos. I know they're finalizing their evaluation of it and report, and I will gladly share that with all of you once they have shared that final assessment of it. But they too are struggling when it comes to fields that have high usage. That is a lot of what this is about, is just anything that has a high usage is hard to maintain from a natural grass. So that has been a very good pilot for us to watch and utilize, I think, to assess. I think it aligns with a lot of our high school usage. I'm so happy to share when they have finalized all of that.
Do you have a timeline when that?
Very soon. I was hoping maybe before this meeting, but not quite. So I'm hoping in the next month or two that we can share that.
I mentioned that I would be very interested to see, because technology have evolved in both areas, so a good data will help us. All right, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I was a student athlete. Softball, right? You're in a field. So I definitely, a lot of this conversation sounds very familiar to me. The difference was that I grew up in a place where it was just hot and dry, so we didn't have a lot of the challenges that we have here in Maryland, right? We have moisture all year round. I have little kids. We have to have all the weather clothing out all year round, because you just never know when things are going to happen. I remember when I was coaching Little League for my kids, we routinely could not use the field because there was puddles and flooding, and even though it's a couple days later, it just doesn't drain well, despite all the good work from our friends at Parks and Planning. So I am concerned about usage and inability to play, and also to practice where you're going to play. I think we don't really talk about that as an athlete, when you're practicing somewhere else and not on the actual field. It is different. It is different. And if we have these athletes that want to go to play at the college level and beyond, then we really need to make sure that we're providing them with the same types of things that they would get, quite frankly, if they go to a lot of these expensive private schools, right? So I do have concerns about that usage. But I also have a concern as a mother about whether or not the turf fields expose our kids to any harmful materials or chemicals. I know that, again, there's been lots of technologies with these fields, so I don't want us to get into a space where we just think about maybe how the fields were when they initially came up as a potential product, and I didn't know if anyone could speak to that aspect.
I can speak to that. I think the initial concerns around that centered around the crumb rubber infill that was used. And in MCPS right now, all of our fields are organic infills. And so, and that technology continues to evolve. So if we look back, you know, eight-ish years ago, we were using zeolite, which we've transitioned those fields predominantly to a sand infill. We've used shaved pine, and now we're using coconut and walnut organic infill. And so I think that organic piece has really changed the dynamics around the artificial turf fields. The other piece of that, they're cooler. The organic infills, infills are cooler, and so the weather has come up in a couple of the comments. There's a couple of things I want to speak to with the weather. One, on the artificial turf, we do have guidelines in place that curtail activities when it's warm, and we also have special guidelines for artificial turf fields. So those things exist for the turf fields. But I also want to talk about the weather when it comes to natural grass. Our natural grass fields are Bermuda grass, all right? That is the best playing surface in terms of the grass. But where Maryland and where we are located is not ideal climate for the Bermuda grass. And what you'll see on our stadium fields- And what you'll see on our stadium fields, our Bermuda fields, is that typically around the 1st of October, they start, the Bermuda goes dormant and turns brown. And so you'll see that transition happening, and they don't wake up, if you will, until late part of the spring, and really the ideal time for the Bermuda fields in the summer. Bermuda grass likes the warm weather and it loves water. And so that becomes problematic too from a maintenance perspective, and then, of course, the, the hours of use and the ability to use that. And we're trying to keep games off the fields to preserve the actual playing surface. So I did want to make those points in terms of the weather.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
Sure. I wanted to make sure that we're capturing all the actual maintenance on the synthetic turf that's included in that $12,000. So for instance, it says zero water utilities, but it is my understanding that sometimes you do actually need to water the turf, the plastic turf, because of the infill that's being used and that, that infill sometimes needs water. So have you, is that true that the infill needs water sometimes because it says zero water utilities? Or do you need to water it, for instance, if it's really hot out, you need to cool things down?
We are not watering the infill to cool things down or as part of the typical maintenance plan for the fields.
So you do not water the, the plastic turf? You do not?
To my knowledge, there's no watering of the infills.
Is there any other maintenance, does, is that $12,000 for the, the twi, two times a year that our contractor goes out Keystone?
That $12,000 covers the eight maintenance visits, the grooming of the fields, as well as the two GMAX tests that occur before the fall and the spring seasons.
Okay, great. That's helpful. I'm just making sure, like, we're comparing apples to apples. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manu.
So I'm just curious, because I haven't seen it throughout the presentation. When we were looking at the data of how turf fields affected, like, current schools that already have it implemented, did we also take into account how it's affecting the track, for example, near the turf field or surrounding, or the stadium surrounding it, and if that expanded its lifespan or benefited at all?
I can't speak to the impact on the track, per se. The overall facilities are being used more. I would say the, the artificial turf fields are being used, so the track is not as used, used as frequently. So I, again, I can't, I don't have the data to support one way or the other, and I don't want to speculate and give you inaccurate information.
All right, if I could get, if we could get data on just how the overall track's lifespan may or may not be benefited based on turf fields, then I think that would be helpful. When I ran track, I specifically recall always whether or not there were turf fields at our stadiums and near our facilities, and it was beneficial in some cases.
Thank you. Mrs. Berman.
Thank you. I was hoping that we could get a little bit more information on the useful lifespan of a turf field and what happens at the end of a useful lifespan of a turf field.
Yeah, so on average, a vendor will tell us that it is 10 years, eight to 12 years is often what they see. The range is really dependent on the usage. If it's a heavy, heavily utilized field, we're going to get closer to eight to nine years. If it's sort of a moderately used field, we're still using it for athletics, right? We still probably have community use, but maybe not the 14 hours of the day that it is available that Jeff and I have talked about. We might be able to get that closer to 12. I would say what's really changed with the manufacturers over the last decade is their ability to recycle and happy to send, you know, any brochures or information that's needed. But they all, when, when we replace it, they take that, they take it to a recycling plant, and they often use it for the infill underneath a new field. So they are recycling the old products. That has changed. I know that wasn't always the case in the past, but they are, and all of them have committed to that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sylvester.
I think that was my question, because I have been here seven years, and that was not the case when I first started. Could you just go back to the, you mentioned the pilot. Can you just restate where that might, what, just the details of that once again?
It's the Hillendale Park on New Hampshire Avenue. It's near White Oak Middle School for us, about like a mile and a half south of that. I believe it's just north of 495. But it's a big grass field. It's a very heavily utilized for parks. They are constantly programming it, so that's why they wanted to choose that location as a good pilot, right? I think we all understand that if it's an underutilized field, it's easier to maintain the natural grass, so it's sort of why they chose that location. They have some good photos. Again, I know they're working on sort of a comprehensive update for their commission as well and the public to sort of show what they've been, you know, that, that team has been out there, the maintenance team, really trying their best to keep it in use like they want to while also maintaining it. And they've already, again, within the first two years, had to replace, do a complete replacement of the natural grass.
Okay, great, thank you. And just to Ms. Stewart's point about the costs, just, I see here that you're not, also not counting the cost of mowers and gasoline for some of the maintenance costs of grass fields, so.
Yeah, I think we just don't have exact data on that, and so didn't want to speculate. We do a mixture of our team in-house, MCPS, maintenance and operations, but also Parks mows a lot of our fields for us, our natural grass fields as well. So it's not, it's a mixture between the two. And so in lieu of trying to throw a number at it, we didn't feel that we had a, a good solid number to share.
Ms. Rivera.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea. Just very quickly, I guess I just want to be clear for the public, when we're talking usage, my understanding, at least when I was, I was chairing Cuff, was that part of the issue for our grass fields was the over-usage of those fields, which does have an impact on our grass fields. But if there was no public usage on our fields, if they were not open to, you know, to the public, one thing is to have a park with Bermuda grass, another thing is to have a high school with Bermuda grass, and there's a difference. But if you had the regular usage that you would have at a school, it is, it's not the same comparison as the usage of a facility that is open to the public. So I just want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. So I, I don't know if the other 12 schools that we're talking about who have grass are open to, to the public or not, but I know at least with Parks, you know, like the one that you just mentioned, those are, are open to soccer leagues and other community groups. So I just want to make sure that we are comparing apples to apples.
All right, Ms. Montoya.
I guess, is there an answer? Because I will just say, like, even at my kids' schools, like, elementary, we wanted to do an after-school soccer, and it was like, oh, nope, someone else is already renting the field, some other, you know, group or company running a soccer class or whatever. So, I mean, even on schools where we don't have an official field, I mean, it's just the grass playground at the school, right? They're renting that presumably through CUPF to use that and it's grass, and so that's the usage, and the kids show up the next day and they play on it. And so I hear, I do hear what you're saying. I guess I'm just, it seems like all of our schools are open to be rented in some ways, right?
We do treat the high school stadium fields separately for some other reasons that have been outlined here. And partly, again, this does get to some of the use and closure policies. When it is an artificial turf field, as Dr. Sullivan was saying, it is open for community use. When it's grass, the high school stadium field is not because the overuse, again, makes that even more.
It could preclude the students from being able to use it.
Even more challenging. I will say, though, that we do, as, as again Jeff was saying, even on our grass fields, our grass stadium fields, we limit our own use as well. So MCPS is also limiting its own use of the stadium grass fields to preserve them because even that level of use is challenging.
Okay. And so, thank you for, for that explanation, just so I can understand exactly what we're talking about. My question actually has to go with some of the current schools that are on the list. Like, I see we have one elementary school and one middle school. And I'm feeling a little confused as to where those come from or how that came about, only because it seems like if those exist, then now we have to maintain them and potentially replace them. And we have, you know, it's one thing to say, okay, well, all of our high schools should be able to have that parity, right? Because there's 25, 26. But there's 100 and plus elementaries and then the middles, and so.
Forty middle schools.
Right, right. So I'm just wondering if you can help me to understand, perhaps some of my colleagues are wondering too, it sounds like, why do we have this standalone elementary school Somerset and this standalone middle school Julius West that have turf fields, and how does that figure into all of this?
And there's one more, too. At Floris Singer, there's a soccer field. I don't think it made this list.
Thank you for that. I didn't know that.
Maybe someone can answer?
Floris Singer could be a Parks field, which may be why it's not on our list. So I'm going to, I'm going to jump in just from a quick historical perspective on both of those. The, it, it is true that certainly MCPS has not adopted any kind of standard around or policy or approach to go with synthetic turf outside of the high school stadium field. So I just want to be really clear about that. These are definitely one-offs, as you're highlighting. And they came about through sort of two different conversations with both of those, with both of those entities. And as Ms. Grace Rivera oven was saying, we certainly didn't start the artificial turf conversation from an equity lens. I think that has really evolved to something that we do want to prioritize. But both of these reflect specific conversations. The Somerset Elementary School community was very concerned about the state of, they do have a small footprint and concerned about some of the state of their playing surfaces. And so that community generated the funding to support that, and at the time, MCPS approved that. Julius West came about actually because in that era of time, MCPS was pursuing implementing artificial turf fields through partnerships with sports organizations. Again, we're not doing that anymore, but because of that, and actually it was the outgrowth of some legal action, we did enter into an, an agreement for those fields. So long story short, they were one-offs of, of the, again, products of their times, I might say. And at this point, to your point, we do have to factor them into our maintenance plan in terms of how to ensure that they continue to be operational.
Right, because our policy is, when we have these capital improvements, that perhaps, and, and I don't know the details surrounding these two, but say perhaps there was a booster club or a PTA and they raised money, and I've looked at this policy because for my own kids' schools. And when you do that, you do have to seek this approval, there's a process, but MCPS then has to agree to maintain, right? So even if they can come up with the $1 million to put the turf field in, MCPS then has to agree to these maintenance costs that you're putting here, right? And so even though we're no longer saying, well, we're going to explore middle school turf fields, or perhaps there are other schools that have a small footprint that might like to have a turf field instead, we're kind of moving away from that, but we're still on the hook for maintaining these two? Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
So I, as far as the equity part, I do want to note that our three top-performing football teams all play on natural grass. I thought that was interesting. QO, Sherwood, and Churchill. And so in that case, it seemed to work out for them.
Be careful.
I also have questions about total hours of use. For instance, you mentioned that the grass turns brown. Does that really mean you can't play on a field that's not perfectly green? I mean, is, why, why is that? Yeah, I'm curious. What's the reason why you couldn't play on the brown?
The, the grass is just dormant and changing. We're still playing on them. We still play on the grass fields. We, we don't close the fields, they're still being used. I just wanted to explain that we're not in the ideal climate for Bermuda grass. That was the point. We are still playing on the Bermuda fields.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that with the coloring.
It's hard.
Okay, and so you can, yeah, you can go ahead and answer that.
Sorry, the, the fields, I will just say from experience, the field, it gets hard and it hurts. I mean, it literally hurts.
Yeah, which is why the greenup percentage actually matters, and unfortunately, the greenup percentage is at its peak in the summertime. So when we're not using it, which is unfortunate, that the optimal usage for the grass fields is actually when we're not in session.
Ms. Wolf.
I have another, can I, another question? Just because we're talking about seasons, et cetera, and we are getting hotter, and there are some guidelines I see in the athletic handbook, but it doesn't call, talk about the wet bulb. So, so, you know, you're measuring the humidity along with the temperature, and I just want, and also I noticed it says teams shall restrict activities instead of will? Or, you know, is there a level of choice there? Because I just want to make sure that we are not exposing our kids to the kind of temperatures that I've seen on artificial turf, up to 140, 160 degrees on the ground. So I also would like to see the temperatures on these newer infills because, again, this is something that we should be tracking.
So I will say, the, the weather guidelines are, shall, will, we, we are off during those times. We're also restricting, especially in the summer, to our workouts that would be on a field or just in general into the early morning hours of the afternoon. That is just good health and safety practice in terms of how we operate the program, especially with our certified athletic trainers in our schools who are, they're present for the practices and supporting our program as it operates. So we do stay off the fields during those times. In terms of the wet bulb temperature, we use the heat index. And the reason why we use heat index, and I understand the wet bulb is the most ideal, and just for the public, the wet bulb is a very specific measuring to a site, right? So a wet bulb temperature reading can be different on a turf, it could be different in a shaded space, it can be different up on the hill, down in the valley. It is specific to a site. We have hundreds of teams practicing all over the county, right? So not just specific to a high school campus. Right now, in the fall season, we have schools practicing at middle schools, elementary schools, park fields, right? So using, with a, with a district our size and a program our size, being able to use the heat index, right? And we're splitting hairs in terms of that, you know, the wet bulb versus heat index. And certainly understand the ideal piece would have a wet bulb reading every single place we're operating in activity. But from a reasonable operational perspective, we do use the heat index, and you'll see that on our website in terms of the colors and what activities are allowed. And when, when these high readings are out, we're not operating. The program is out when there's a code red, when the heat index is up there. We're not operating, or we're operating under limited equipment and time with mandatory water breaks, and we are limiting the time on artificial turf field in addition to all of those health and safety protocols. And so that, just to be clear, in terms of the steps that we are taking here in MCPS, are above and beyond any district I know of in our state in terms of how we utilize health and safety as a driving force around the use of artificial turf fields.
Because we know artificial turfs, we know they get hotter, I think would be a good idea to at least use that technology where the artificial turf is because we just know it gets hotter. And I also have one more question.
We'll come back to you. Ms. Wolf hasn't had a turn, then I'll come back from my left-hand side. Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on Ms. Montoya's question. Regarding Julius West and Somerset, were these recent installations that we did or that they, this is the year that they put them in?
2019, 2016.
Because it's, it says 2019 and 2016. My real question is, at the end of the life, do we have to replace it?
We will be.
And why would we replace it if we didn't install it? And why would we replace it if we didn't install it?
So technically, I believe we did install it. I mean, the, I mean, the system contracted for the work. The system had funding from other entities in order to do that.
Okay. I understand that. But my question is, why are we keeping it up if they funded it?
This is gonna shock you, but we made a bad deal.
Well.
And 10 years ago, they entered into an arrangement for the here and now, and now we are the ones that have to deal with the consequences 10 years later.
You're saying this is forever? I mean, they created a contract that lasts beyond?
We, we made an arrangement, and we would have to go back and revisit that. But we will have to do something, whether it is the removal of that, that turf when it's ended its useful life, or the replacement in kind, or the establishment of a grass field space. But one way or another, we will have to address those facilities as a reaction to the agreements that were made a decade ago, and we're on the hook for them.
Okay. I'd just like to get a copy of those agreements. I'd just like to see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Imberman.
Thank you. I have two related questions. The first is why the Poolsville High School installation costs nearly $1 million more than the Springbrook and the Watkins Mill installations?
Yeah. So we've already preliminary looked at that, and we were told that the stormwater management piece at that site is much more significant. So it's not only the subgrade and the, the actual turf itself, it's the drainage and the stormwater that goes along with that. Because the, the county views artificial turf as a hard surface, so we have to provide drainage and stormwater, just as we would for an asphalt, asphalt parking lot. So.
Got it.
There's a lot of other costs besides the green turf that, that come along with that. So those, those costs will differ from site to site, but we were told that that one specifically will have much higher costs.
Yeah. I think we've talked about a lot of elements here, but one that I feel like we keep returning to is cost. I think many of us would be interested in seeing what the cost difference would be if we were to choose to do natural fields as opposed to turf.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. This is gonna sound similar to a question I had before, but McGruder is on the list for turf. So can we just explain for the community, and it may be because it's like, well, their end of the year, end of life for that turf is, is done, so we have to get it done. And if we wait too much longer, depending on whatever option gets chosen, right? They just need the field. That's fine. I just want to make sure that the community understands why we have one proposal going over here to kind of rebuild the whole space, but then we have some of these piecemeal projects.
If we can pull up the slide with the map and show, a couple things with the, the schools that are in this year's recommended, first, the four schools there. We looked regionally at where the schools are located. And I was on McGruder's field two weeks ago when Damascus played there. The field would benefit from an artificial turf and located centrally. Poolsville, since we installed the first artificial turf field, when we've had a modernization or a new build project, as part of that project, we've included an artificial turf field. So Poolsville would align with the other modernization and new build projects during the last, really since 2007-ish, when Richard Montgomery was our first field. Springbrook High School is our smallest footprint, along with BCC. There is just the stadium field and then an upper shared field between the baseball and softball fields. So looking, again, when you look geographically, Springbrook, where it's located, as well as the small campus footprint, was a selection. And then finally, Watkins Mill, we need an additional artificial turf field in the upper part of the county. And when you look at the other capital improvement projects and weigh, you know, like a Damascus, and as well as, how old are the schools, right? Northwest is much, is newer than Watkins Mill. So we looked at some of those factors as well and came up with what we believe is a Fab Four, if you will, to start with the CIP, that really balances all of those things and takes into account a number of factors to produce that list of schools.
And does that, do the turf fields, what is, is it five, the five systems, the 16-year window? Do your turf fields in that part of that also? Okay. But if, and I guess what I'm getting at is if we see these pieces for McGruder happening, but then we're talking about have, just rebuilding a whole new school, can you just understand how that might be confusing for folks?
And again, just thinking about comprehensively, when this came out, McGruder and Wooton were not in there. And so we needed to think about the upgrades that needed to take place with, in lieu of a full renewal or renovation. So I think your line of thinking is absolutely appropriate, given the things that have been added and part of the conversation over the last couple of weeks. There's also absolutely ways to do this and to maintain that field, should one of the options be considered, right? That they move offsite for the time of the renewal, that field likely could stay intact without being impacted.
Okay. So depending on what happens with some of these other proposals, then some of this might be moving around also, correct?
Correct.
I just, I have to raise my hand or not for something, right? And I need to know what I'm, what I'm raising it for or not.
Yeah. And, and potentially. And what the board has to consider is a lot of what ifs that overlap one another. And what, what you are looking at in terms of your capital improvement plan is just that. It's a, it's a plan. And there may be downwind implications if you go one direction with a set of boundary assumptions and changes. And that might stay intact. And if you go in another direction, it might push you in another point where you may make a, a change to your plan. But the idea is queuing up projects and making sure that you have a priority list of projects ready to go. So if not this, then that is, is really the, the focus that you should have. They've prioritized some recommendations that, that I've endorsed. I also agree with them. And I also think that, that there is a way for you to have a, a little bit of both. In particular, with a renewal project, investments like a roof, it's totally worth explaining why that makes good sense, because it's the guts of the school that are going to be revitalized, not necessarily the, the physical structure on the outside itself, although there's likely going to be some work there, too. And that includes a, a revisiting of the athletic facility. So even if you upgraded the athletic facility, it can still be used during the renewal period and still be used as a, as a home field for the, the students, even if they're offsite, which is an option, too. So.
Okay. And sorry, just remind me, this is not include as one of the systems, right? Because I see Churchill on here again. 2032 apparently is going to be a big year for Churchill. It seems like everything's getting redone there.
So the exterior components are not one of the five systems.
Okay. So that's just something like, we're just funding. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart.
Have we tried installing a regenerative organic, state-of-the-art grass field at Have we attempted that?
Not to my knowledge. Yeah. We can double check with a few others, but not to my knowledge, no.
Because I have read that these type of fields, after a couple of years, can get upwards, up to 2,000 hours of use versus, I think you were using about 500 hours, is my correct, right now, today? So, um, this slide doesn't really say the, each particular field, sorry. But I believe it's about 500, am I correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. So even if we didn't get up to 2,000, we'd get up to 1,500, right? Like, it would make a huge difference. And there are some investments to do that, but I would like to price out a regenerative, organic field, because, you know, for instance, in Montgomery County, we have something called the ag reserve. And we actually do have a lot of experts in this county that deal with grass and turf. And I think we should not rule out the possibility of us being on the cutting edge of grass technology. I want to point out that if we follow this plan, we'd be putting over 400 tons of plastic in our county. So it's, it's something we really should think hard about. The environmental aspect to this, the PFAS that has been shown in the blades, the way the blades break down and go into our water systems, we need to weigh this carefully. And so this is why I, I'm always trying to look for technology to try to get the, the balance right. And so, thanks for this presentation. I also noticed there was some discrepancy in the OLO in this presentation, and I'll follow up via email on that.
Thank you. Remind me, the pilot that you mentioned that's doing, that the park and recreation is doing a hillstale, are they using the newest regenerated grass for that pilot, or that is not?
It's the Bermuda grass, I believe. I can double check.
Okay. I will be interested to see if we, ourselves, with the newest technology, to pilot at one site, to see what's usage we can get out of that. And, and last, just to, a reminder to everyone, this is a plan, and it depends on funding for all of it. Even our real ask the proposal, county has set a spending guideline. And this is above the county's spending guideline. So there are a lot of decisions down the road for the system and for the board to decide. Let's, oh, Ms. Sebastian.
Just, Ms. Stewart made a comment and no one responded, so I'm assuming she's correct. Does anybody want to respond to her comment about the waste that is being generated as a result of the turf fields? Because otherwise.
It's not the waste. I'm saying that there will be plastic on, on the ground instead of natural grass, which in itself is an environmental issue. The waste is another issue I am very concerned about, because I don't think the recycling actually recycles the whole, all the parts, right?
Okay. I apologize. I misunderstood, but if you want to address it.
No, I mean, it's an accurate statement. It's a synthetic plastic is what the artificial turf is.
But the infill is with organic materials.
Is organic, correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the next session. Thank you.
Great. So we just have a few follow-up slides based on questions that have been asked through both public testimony and through the previous work sessions. So the first one we're gonna start with, this was brought up earlier today on Damascus Elementary, and we have a follow-up slide on Twinbrook as well. We are moving forward with an ADA project there. The reason it's not shown in the previous slides, again, because this is using existing FY26 funding, so it's not in the FY27 proposal. We've been out there, our team has been working with the school administration there to prioritize a few different projects. The same is true for Twinbrook Elementary School. We are looking at adding an elevator, as well as looking at some of the other exterior compliance pieces, such as parking and an accessible stall as well for inside for restroom. And then we have a view, very specific, about four questions that we wanted to go over that have been brought up. So one of the questions was, the public would like clarification on why Twin, Twinbrook Elementary is so far down the list, based on the original FCI. And we wanted to just share, I won't read this, but it just shares some of the additional context, right? When we make investment, that is a good thing in the facilities, but that does impact what the facility condition index. So we just listed out some of the recent projects, such as the HVAC from 2020, the chiller enclosure, additional carpet replacement, painting, and you can see that list of the projects. The next one, that you would like clarification on the DEFEEF zoning, since it appears to be inconsistent on the maps and options. This was brought up during a public testimony. The individual actually shared the map. And if you recall, back in August, we started sharing during regular board meetings, the boundaries and programs teams put a map together that showed the six regions. In doing that, we have to take in consideration the existing boundaries for the high schools that are being proposed in those regions. So because DEFEEF currently articulates to Wooton, they do show, they show, you can like see a little bump out right in the region four, for that region. What's changing in some of the boundary options right now is that they are showing a new articulation pattern. And so it's not an inconsistent map, it's just what we are showing with the program region boundary. We have to use existing, so that we are not making any assumptions on the proposed boundary options. And two more. There was also public testimony about providing a list of schools currently under consideration for enrollment, location, and changes due to the boundary changes. It was brought up specifically about the impact that some of the Woodland Elementary School has had. So I think we just wanted to clarify that there are no students currently attending middle school and high school that have involved in boundary studies that will be impacted by the one that we are currently, so in the last five years. What was brought up specifically about Woodland is the impact that our students have had during COVID, right? Many of them were doing remote learning. And then they actually moved over to Grovesner while they're construction. So they, you know, experienced the impact of COVID, learning from home, then they had the impact of going to Grovesner as the holding while their facility was in construction, and then moving back. And so that is why that, that specific school was referencing multiple impacts. It's a very valid impact, but it wasn't a result of a boundary. That's what we wanted to clarify. And then the last one was requesting additional information on the effectiveness of block scheduling at Eastern Middle School, and if and how block scheduling will be implemented at middle schools, receiving the Silver Spring International students once the school is closed, given that current recommendation and proposal on the table. And so in consulting with our programs team and curriculum team, the decision to do block scheduling is really a school-based decision. And it's a school wants to change the structure on how they support their students, that's made at the leadership level. But they did want to note that by 2027, additional schools will need to implement a consistent model due to changes that are coming with MSD. And with that, we will end with the timeline slide. So that concludes the slides. Happy to take additional questions, broader questions, or any additional follow-up questions.
Yes, I will open it up for any additional questions. Ms. Montoya.
And I just want to preface this by saying that we may not have an answer, and the community needs to know that, too. There's a lot going on, a lot of things that are going to be worked on, a lot of long overdue kind of fixes, right? Which is fantastic. But one of the questions, and I get some variation of this question in a lot of spaces that I go to, but someone was kind enough to say it very explicitly. They said, Ms. Montoya, we understand staffing, we understand the costs, we understand we can only do so much at one time as a system. But what are we supposed to do now? And this was a school whose name is not mentioned anywhere in any of this. And I was there, though, and it is very hot in spaces where it should not be hot. And there was very young children in those spaces, and it was not a hot day even. And so I understand where they're coming from. And my own children have had times when it's like, oh, we gotta send you with some extra clothes in, it's, it's, the heater's broken and takes a while to get that piece or whatever. So I understand, you know, why that has to be the case, and the kids are fine. My kids were fine. But I think that's kind of the overarching question that gets asked by a lot of people is, because those needs that they're saying are not made up, they're very real. It's just that our need is so great that these budgets and, and proposals can only capture some of the most dire need when we compare them. And so as we just kind of move along, I just would like to have all of us think about, what is the answer to that question? What are these schools and children and families and staff supposed to do in the meantime if their school maybe never really even makes that list? And again, we might not have an answer for that today, but I think we do need to try to think about how we help those schools to get through the year, because those problems are very real also.
Just to, for you to answer that, also to let my colleagues know, the next time we meet is November 20th. All right. So just that, to let everyone know, the next time we meet is November 20th. The board is expected to take actions on the proposal. So if there are any more information and data that you would like, you should let the staff know now in order to help you make decisions. And also want all of you to keep in mind, and the audience to keep in mind, we can ask, we can send something to county council in the spring when the budget is done, or understand that we might need to relook at our list again, depending on the level of county's funding to the school system for capital improvement. to the school system for capital improvement. All right. Okay, Ms. Stewart.
Could I just respond to that comment real quickly? While I know this entire conversation, right, has been focused on capital funding, honestly, a lot of what you're getting at is also just maintenance. And we have had significant leadership and entire changes on the facilities team. And I think we are headed in a very strong and positive direction. We have changes at the service center level and really reworking with our schools. I think they have gotten frustrated over the years of submitting work orders and not hearing from the right people. And we are really trying to rebuild that. Can we solve every work order quickly? Absolutely not, right? That's not in our capacity. But can we be responsive and let people know where we are? Yes. And I think that is something that I've been working closely with the team and with our new directors and our managers to improve. It's been something that's kind of fallen, and I think we are slowly getting-
Ms. Stewart.
I appreciate that comment. And in that vein, in the past, way before you, there was a promise made to the public that there would be some kind of public view into maintenance orders. Are we still working on that?
Yes.
I love the yes. Thank you. One more thing, just my own, I'm just letting the public know where I am in prioritization. And my prioritization is HVAC and air quality. And that is, I think, I hope my colleagues agree that that is a focus. And I think we've heard a lot about that today. So thank you so much for all the information and the march towards more transparency. And that maintenance piece would be towards that march. Thank you.
I still have one more thing I'm trying to understand from this budget. In this budget, there are allocations for staffing in this budget. So when do we put staffing in operation budget? When do we put it in CIP budget? And that's one. And I also, we, you haven't touched upon technology modernization, technology modernization. That is also where we have a lot of staffing costs that put in the technology modernization. So I would like you to touch upon those things.
I will start. So the specific line Ms. Yang is referring to, it's called the Design and Construction Management Line. That is the line that funds our planning and construction team. So you will only see a handful of those people in the actual operating budget. The majority of that team, anyone that's primarily focused on a capital construction project can be funded out of capital dollars. So there's no overlap. They will show up in the org chart, and there's actually, at the very end of the operating budget, lists those positions that are capital funded, but they will not show up in the actual operating budget.
So let's take a quick second to explain why capital and not operating in terms of numbers. Depending on the number of projects that we have active may depend on the number of staff. So different than what we would do in the operating, in the local budget, where these would be our consistent staff members that we know we need to operate construction, that we know we need to operate a certain function, no matter what, whether we've got zero projects or 20 projects, they would stay in the operating budget.
Maintenance crew will be there.
Yeah, but, but what would be variable might be these additional staff members that are tagged in the capital improvements program because of, it may be number of project dependent or type of project dependent. And so as the projects change, the number of staff changes along with it. You also see personnel tagged in there for purchase service of a P3 consultant. That's new. And that's certainly new for us because we're exploring that as a potential option and a potential cost saving. So our hope is that ultimately that pays for itself. But, you know, we do need to account for it, and it's not appropriate for us, for it to land in our operating budget because eventually that will go away. And the need for that would be, would change over time. So it's almost, think about it like fixed costs versus variable costs.
Okay. So can you also address, does that explain the big staffing cost in the tech mod session that we are hiring outside people to do some of this modernization work?
So tech mod, tech mod actually is a little bit of a different situation from the CIP conversation. And that's one that I think we will come back to more fully as we talk about our operating budget, because that's, while, while there is a significant budget piece here in the capital budget, it is more closely aligned with our conversation in the operating budget. There are staff members associated with the tech mod budget, and that, again, those are positions that conduct the work that is funded out of the tech mod budget in CIP. However, part of what we see here is the beginning of a, an approach that we wanted to take to bring those two budgets closer together and to really reduce our footprint in the capital budget for tech mod. But again, I think we'll bring that conversation back to the board more fully when we talk about the operating budget so that we can look more fully at the two pieces together and how they interact.
Punchline, we definitely see tech mod as it's currently conceived and how we could conceive it in the future is really more of an operating expense. And think about it in the same context of the construction personnel. It really is more of a fixed expense than a variable expense. And so as we go into the future of tech mod, we may be introducing proposals for the board to consider how that might look in the operating budget. So there's not a ton of changes with tech mod this year, but, but know that we see that as more of a fixed expense. Technology isn't, isn't going away. It's not disappearing. But right now, as it, as it's conceived, we could see it going more operating.
So just to clarify, this year in our CIP proposal, the tech mod is included in our CIP. You are saying for future planning, we would like to see that in our operation budget. Okay. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. Just because this is actually the last time we get to ask questions, I think, really, right, for the benefit of the community, before we're expected to take a vote. And so I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding, again, recognizing that, yes, there's going to be this back and forth with the process. I understand that. I think the community understands that as well. But it seems like the current CIP encompasses some projects that we don't really have decisions on yet. So for example, Sligo Creek Elementary School replacement is in there. Eastern Middle School, the replacement is there, but I know there's a proposal to maybe make the replacement bigger. So it just, it's getting a little, but then again, we don't see McGruder and Wooten in here in terms of that proposal. So it just feels a little muddled in terms of, for myself, being clear on what exactly am I voting for or not? And for the community to understand, when we take a vote next week, what are we voting for or not? Because it seems like, again, some of this, it seems like some of the CIP encompasses some of the proposals, but not others. And so it's just, it's very unclear. I also do have some concerns about the elementary school projects, given that we know we need to do an elementary school boundary, given that we know that enrollment is down, given that $60 million can do a lot of things. So these aren't small, you know, relatively speaking, this is not one or $2 million, right? Which is still a lot of money. So I'm just hoping I can, I can personally get some clarity, but also for the benefit of the community, because they come to me with a lot of these questions.
The recommendation that I put forward in this year's CIP is the sure-footed items that you can move forward with. Now, the CIP is a six-year plan. It is. The two most relevant years in the CIP are the first two years in the CIP. And so that really sets you in a direction. We've talked about a lot of things that could potentially change, like the introduction of McGruder and Wooten. And we've shown timelines and what that could look like. Perhaps it could be in this six-year outlay. Candidly, whether it makes it into the six-year outlay or it doesn't make it into the six-year outlay, that is an amendment that you absolutely can add at a later date. Part of the, the challenge is we have introduced things that overlap with boundaries. And the most confusing part about this year's CIP process is precisely what you're talking about, is the fact that the timelines don't align. And what we would like to do is to have the board weigh in on this CIP as it's proposed, because it does outlay at least the next two years very clearly as to what we would expect and where it would place us. It does not recommend elementary projects that would be in conflict with future changes that might occur as, as it relates to boundaries and potential other school closings or things of that nature that we have to consider down the road. And that it does not lock the board in, and I think that this is really important. It does not lock the board in to a decision about a holding school until you're ready to make that decision about a holding school. Because candidly, the question that you have about McGruder and Wooten are largely dependent on whether or not you have a holding school. And so because that's not a decision that the board has queued up to make until March, my best recommendation for the board's consideration is, don't make that decision until you have to make that decision, until you've received public commentary and that you've got public hearings on the boundary, and you've had public hearings on that option, whether there's maps and whatnot. And none of these recommendations conflict with that at this point. So I think you're, I think you're in a good place with that, but you're asking the right question because those two things are so intertwined, and it can be confusing because the timelines.
Right. But when we're looking here at Sligo Creek Elementary School replacement, Eastern and Sligo Middle School, doesn't some of that encompass some of the proposal to close Silver Spring International Middle School, which we haven't gone through that process yet? I mean, I know, we all know Eastern is in need of repair, no matter what happens, right? I think the question is, is how big of a repair, right?
Well, part of-
Replacement, really.
Part of this capital improvement program recommendation is the closure of, of Sims.
Right. And I guess I'm just confused because we have the policy that lays out very clearly what the process is for any school closure, irrespective. And we haven't gone through that process yet, but we're, it looks like, and to the community, it looks like we're voting on that by voting for a proposal that would encompass the facility changes that would be necessary to put that closure into place.
Correct. Yeah, you, you have some time. And, and even though you are signaling that there's work and projects, you still have time to go through that full process. And I would recommend you go through that full process. But you've, you, you have a window of time, and what you are signaling regardless is that you are committed to the projects that we've spelled out, even though it, it may be a part of that process. Like, for example, the Sligo Creek Elementary School, that, that's still a noteworthy project. You're not closing Sligo Creek Elementary School.
Right. But it wasn't very high on the index or the ranking or the, right? And so that's what I'm looking at there. And so for the community, it can feel like by voting for these things to happen that we've already either decided what we're going to do in terms of Sims, we've already, we're basically voting, right? Even though we haven't gone through the process. But what I hear you saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the actual actions of getting those things started would not occur until after the process, we go through the process for whether or not to close Sims.
Correct.
So if, for example, it's decided that, you know what, maybe that's not the best decision to close Sims, then we can then go back, rework those sections of the CIP, and that would be a full option available. Is that correct?
Yes. And, and to that point too, and Sligo Creek Elementary School is a very good example. You have need of an elementary holding school in that part of the county. It certainly makes your Piney Branch construction project more possible and more palatable to have that as an option. So even though that project did not rank very high on the facility condition index or even the weighted formula, you are creating capacity with that recommendation and with that project to do other projects.
Okay. So there's other considerations to be taken into account when we decide which projects move forward and when, other than just the facilities index, the weighted formulas and things like that? Because again, this is a very large school system. So we're trying to move multiple pieces at multiple times and trying to make the best, sometimes most cost-efficient decisions that we can, right? Because we know that budgets are a challenge. And so the same thing would be said true for the Crown proposal, right? Wooten and McGruder are actually not even in here as proposed replacements. But if they were, it would be a similar nature, that until we go through that process of determining, we could always come back and refigure some of these, right? I just want to make sure that the community is clear, because many, many times I get those sentiments, and I understand, I understand how that feels.
Sure. And, and that is precisely it, is that you would be almost predetermining another decision if we included McGruder or Wooten. It would signal to the community that you've already made up your mind about something without going through the process. We would advise you go through the process before considering an addition back in.
Okay. And just for our Sims community, Sligo Creek community, we are going through the process prior to taking any action on any of the Sligo Creek Elementary, Sligo Middle School, Eastern Middle School. So this is, you know, not a permanent decision, irrespective. Thank you so much.
Ms. Stewart.
So I would like, after hearing that, because I was going to broach that topic about making a decision before we go through the process. So it sounds like it's the beginning of a conversation with our county executive and county council as well, and the way our budget might line up, that this is, this vote on the 20th is really the beginning of a conversation. Is that correct?
Yes. You have a very long CIP budget process, but this is one piece of the puzzle that the county executive considers in making his budget proposal. The other piece of the puzzle, I get to bring to you the second week of December, actually, I think it's the third week of December, and the operating budget. And, and again, it is, these are, these are pieces of a larger puzzle that get revisited back again before the budget is finalized and enacted on July 1 of next year.
So I also want the community to know that this is, this is not the end of the conversation. It's the very beginning, and they will have multiple chances to talk to decision makers, and including the county executive and the county council and us as we move through the process. And to get to the, you know, the solution that's going to be best for the system and for the kids that we serve. And this is a complicated process. It really is complicated, it's long. Hang in there.
That's something, after 10 years you have been doing this.
It is.
But thank you, staff, for your presentation, and we will see you on November 20th with our final decisions. Thank you. Okay. And let me see, do I have a motion to, do I need to adjourn today's meeting? No, it's a work session. I do need a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three. That's unanimous with those present. Thank you so much.